I'd like to follow the order of the December 17th regular session of Cape Charles Town Council. The mayor is on his way home from Poughkeepsie and the vice mayor is running the show, so everybody please be nice, okay? Roll call please.
Dan in prison.
Dan in prison.
Ken in prison.
Natali in prison.
We have a quorum. A N S R police day to lead the political race.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the highest integrity and liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of visitors. Is there anyone here from the Rotary Club?
Are you? Chris.
Can you receive it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, okay, thank you. Is there anyone here from the yacht club?
Club?
It says yacht club.
Yes.
Okay. Recognition of what they've done for the town?
No, we're being...
It's supposed to be...
Oh, it's supposed to be, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. We're not being nice. Certificate of appreciation, this certificate is awarded to... She's going too soon, I'll get them on the line.
Do you have the right one for the right people?
I got the right one. Recognition for the Cape Charles Rotary Club. Road cleanup day on November 7th, 2015. Fourteen rotary, a Rotary Club members worked along Stone Road cleaning up the area and collected ten large bags of trash and plastic glass and other items. So thank you Thomas and the Rotary Club. Cape Charles Yacht Club. This certificate is appreciated to the Cape Charles Yacht Club in recognition of the Cape Charles Yacht Club's road cleanup on October 3rd, 2015. Twelve yacht club members worked along Old Cape Charles Road cleaning up the area and collecting nine bags of trash. Thank you. Certificate of appreciation for the citizens for Central Park in recognition from the citizens... Sit down. In recognition from citizens of Central Park volunteers for their donation for working planting new flower beds and ground cover, removing dead shrubs in the Central Park on October 31st, 2015. Thank you. Thank all the nonprofit organizations. We have public comments, three minutes. Everybody be nice.
Good evening, everybody. So my name is Phil Fretket, two ten Tannaswell, and I'm here to talk about new business aid, which is the Playground Equipment Contract Award. So I'm a former member of the Citizens for Central Park and by the way, thank you for the recognition. And so I've been working with Citizens for Central Park on fundraising for the new playground for the past year or so. And you will see in your meeting information and the funding break, fundraising breakdown, that there's quite a bit of support from the town, throughout the town, for this project. So it's been a pleasure to work on the fundraising. And one of the things I want to sort of point out that you'll see in your breakdown of the staff report is a large donation from the Cape Charles School Association, which is a group of alumni from the Cape Charles School. Not to be confused with some other groups, but it's a large donation and they feel a great amount of pleasure from watching kids play in the park. And it's a kind of a late donation that's put us very close to the goal of total funding for this project with the town's pledged funding. So that was, to me, that was very gratifying. I also worked as part of the evaluation team that came up with the final recommendation for playground equipment. So I just, as a member of that team, I just wanted you to know that I talked about it at my campaign. And I endorse the recognition wholeheartedly. I think it's going to be a great addition to town and a great amenity for kids to use for years to come. So I want to recommend to the town that you go ahead and approve the town manager to go ahead and award the contract for this playground equipment. And in the staff report, you'll notice there are two options. One is to fully fund this new equipment so that the project can be completed in one phase. And that is the recommendation that I think should approve. You need to find a group of more money than what we currently approved, but I hope you can do it. So that's it.
Ask for the approval of the agenda format?
To move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Approval of the minutes. We have the October regular meeting to approve and a number of other smaller meetings that we had. I'd ask if we could lump them all together? If there's no opposition to that?
I move to the minutes of review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Department heads. Treasurers report?
Taxes, taxes are coming in, tax payments. So the total available cash on hand at the end of November was $1,443,405. That was an increase of almost $500,000 to month to month. Total restricted or reserve cash was $1,465,370. So total cash on all accounts is $2,908,775. We have a debt service payment due in January and that's for almost $25,000. Any questions on cash? Revenue versus expenditures? General fund has at the end of November year-to-date revenue of $975,000, year-to-date expenses of $996,45,000, per net balance of negative $21,500. Home utilities, year-to-date revenue of $790,000, year-to-date expenses of $586,000, per net balance of $204,000. The harbor fund has year-to-date revenue of $431,500, year-to-date expenses of $442,800, per net balance of negative $11,300. We'll note on the report that we're doing better than, twice as well as last year. Last year at this point, we were at negative $29,000. Those are the share in harbor. Sanitation fund has year-to-date revenue of $77,900, year-to-date expenses of $57,600, per net balance of $20,300. Questions? We only dispersed one check for capital expenditures in November and that was for the trail project, it was $1,751. Next page is tax collections statistics. The new values for real estate, personal property listed there. Personal property was up slightly. So far, we collected 32% because of the end of November. We had collected 32% of the total budget for real estate, 68% of the budget for our personal business machinery tools and license tax. And we're at 25% of budget collections for the prior year and interest and grants collections. Ready to move on? Page five, the three-year revenue comparison. Feels tax revenues increased 25% over 2014, even though we're short two payments from one of the... Transient occupancy tax revenue increased 54% over 2014. If you recall, we increased the rate just 0.7%. That's significant. Local sales taxes increased. I want to note that machinery and tools tax is not listed. The payment was actually due in December and that's, it was made one time, but it won't show up till December. The income statement. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, everybody. I'd like to approve the financial...
Please.
Any objections? Passes. Other commission and boards report?
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, and Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you, everybody.
Just one addition to my chair report. Under the harbor area review board, the pending application has been received application. So that board will be meeting on Monday, 21st of December, 2016.
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Who's next on the boards?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Council has any questions, correct?
Ladies?
I have one thing to add. The yacht started sweeping the streets last week. They had a problem with their machines, so they're going to be back into town next week and start up on Tuesday. We're admitting the streets have to be more or less dry, you know, for them to run that machine. So they could be back in and going at it next week. And that's all I've got.
Questions?
Yeah, you told me about the phosphorus. What's going on with phosphorus?
Well, we, in August, the numbers on phosphorus went up considerably. The closest thing that, well, there's something that really correlates very closely to that. We had six mixers that we had to pull out of the tanks and send out for repairs, which went down in the end of July. So by the time the mixers were, we realized they were bad and we pulled them out, sent them in for, so that they could assess the damage to them and everything. They were out of the tanks for pretty much a month of August. And so that's the thing that most closely correlates with it. We thought maybe, at first, that maybe it was due to the fact that we didn't just start with those automatic flushers. But maybe that would bring an increased amount of, you know, increased phosphorus. But when I looked at it, the first flusher went online in early May and didn't have any effect. The second one went online in mid-August. So the thing that most closely correlates is the repair on those mixers. You get rid of the phosphorus by adding alum, aluminum sulfate to the process. And we have bought 2,000 pounds more alum this year than we did last year. So, you know, but we're watching the dosage on the alum. And we've adjusted it up, you know, trying to bring these numbers down. They've been coming down. There's still not where we need them to be. And, but they are coming down.
And is this number that you report, just what is it? Is it the average of the month? Is it the yearly?
The number that we report in the DMR is the yearly average. It's a running average.
1.42?
No, that would be the average for the month. 1.42 is a, I think, let me see. I'm not, the 1.42 is... Yes, I know that. The 1.42 is the phosphorus for this month. The average for the year is 0.6.
Okay, which is still twice the limits, are we?
Correct.
Any danger of being...
Will be fined.
Fined, are we?
Yes.
How long will we have before that happens?
Well, we submit a report at the end of the year, in January, for the year. And at that time, the DEQ assesses it.
And am I right? The actual amount that we're reporting is pounds as opposed to a value of...
We milligrams per liter. We report that. For the nutrient exchange, they go by pound, inch. And, but for the DEQ, our permit is set on milligrams per liter or fractions of milligrams per liter, actually.
And the nitrogen's over as well?
No. This is the nitrogen. The figures that Patrick gave me today were... Our average at this point is 3.49. We have our, and we get four milligrams per liter per nitrogen.
Okay, it seems like a wide period.
Between the phosphorus and the nitrogen?
No, between this value that's reported in this report and the number that's reported today. And I mean, my concern on phosphorus is, can you get it within the limit before the fine is assessed? And is there a graduated fine? What is the fine?
The fine is $10,000 per tenth of a milliliter.
So right now, that would be pretty significant.
Thirty thousand dollars. The problem is, in order to bring, once the numbers go up, we have a spike in it, say in August, and you go up 12 tenths of a milligram above your limit, you can only bring it down, we're at 0.3. So you can only bring it down. We generally run around, you know, we normally look at it at 0.2 milligrams or 0.15 in that range. So if you have a spike that's 12 milli, you know, tenths of a milligram above the limit, you're trying to bring that average back down with one milligram per liter, or 0.1 milligram per liter. So it's hard, once you go over, once you have a spike, it's really hard.
Yeah, that's the point. I know, I mean, to me, this plant is state-of-the-art and it's supposed to do this. This is what it does.
Right.
It removes nitrogen and phosphorus. So, you know, if we're having this kind of problem, we don't know what it is, we could send somebody in here that can help figure it out.
Well, like I said, I mean, we, you know, it looks like it was the mixers going bad.
I know, but you need to know more than it looks like. I mean, there's got to be something that causes it if it's that far out of tolerance.
Well, there aren't so many things you can do. I mean, the alum...
So it'd be pretty easy to discern that.
That's right. And so the alum is what, is what you add to the process to remove the phosphorus. We've been watching the alum, we've been, you know, dosing the alum, you know, increasing dosage for it. And like I said, it's coming back down. And, you know, short of that, if everything else is in the process of working properly, which it is, that's really not all you can do for it. I mean, we've got, we have the engineers on, they're on it. And we're doing, you know, we're talking to them and we're doing the things that the engineer tells you to do. But I mean, it's not like we're doing this for our, I mean, we do have, you know, GHD is still on the job and we've talked to them, I wouldn't say weekly, but every other weekend, why? Any other questions?
Yeah. You know, my meditative discipline, when you use the word flusher, I'm not sure, can you give me a picture of what's going on? It sounds like the flusher is...
No, I'm sorry. The automatic flush system is, is that, it's just what it says. If the flush of the water, the water lines automatically. There's one at the end of Herring Point Drive. There's one at the end of Creekside Lane in Plantation Point. So what it does every night, the one in Herring Point, every night at midnight, and the one at, in Plantation Point on Creekside Lane at 2:00 in the morning, they both flush 1,000 gallons of water. They flush into a tank, a holding tank, and then over the course of several hours, they drain the water, it drains the water out of the tank into a vacuum pod that then fires off and flushes the water into the sewer system. So it does two things. It keeps fresh water out in the far reaches of Bay Creek where there's not a lot of development. And it flushes the sewer lines to keep the water from going septic. And if you keep the lines from going septic, it reduces the... You know, the pump station when they fire off. So it does two things. We'd like, there's a couple of those we'd like to put in and we're just kind of waiting for Bay Creek to give us the go-ahead on the locations.
Is there a flusher on Big Street? All the local citizens there complaining here?
No, that's one we want to put in. We want to put one in at the end of Water, I think it's Waterside Drive, over near Oracle's House. So we're, you know, wanting to get the go-ahead from all. That's one we'd like to put in. We'd like to put one at the other, in Waterside Drive, down near Herring Jakers. And we've got two of them that are ready to go in.
Any other questions?
I have questions here, right? Now, my department levy, where should we put these at?
About 2005, 2006, council designated a 10% fire department levy on every permit. And what that does was, it was designed to be broken out, 80% reduced to Cape Charles Fire Company, the other 20% is broken up to the rest of the fire companies in the county. And it was put in place to have all fire companies upgrade their equipment to be able to tie in to our fire system, our fire engines and stuff. So it was designed for them to get money to buy five-inch oozes and all the fittings. So if we have a fire in town, everybody's equipped to hook up and help fight it.
We had a green tank, that'd been years ago. We got 10 of them working.
One of them working, yeah. We have most of the time, yes.
That's all I've got.
Yeah.
I don't really have anything to add. I just wanted to point out that this year, the Business Association asked us to join the festive parties. And the first weekend we participated, we had 84 people to come in. Why, where did you trap children and parents? The last week, we had 110 and we had no idea we had that many people. So it's a really good relationship and lots of good things have come out of that. And also, the friends are doing a wonderful job. If you haven't been to a tea party, I, you know, I suggest that you go. The food is wonderful. They're doing a great job, so. If I could, yeah, I have a great staff too. I always want to say that every time, but my staff is wonderful. Anyway, any questions?
What is the occupancy of the library? Are we reaching it?
These people, it's between 6:00 and 7:30. So there's not 110 people there at one time. They're coming through. We have two stations, the kids make their armless aircrafts and then they leave. So it's, it does get a little chaotic in the middle, but they're not all there at one time. Okay, so that's not an issue, is that one?
Jay, are you everything for the first department?
Hello?
Anybody else have any questions to any other? There's no old business. New businesses, Playground Equipment Contract Award. In town, now Mr. ...
So this is what's going on?
Turn it off.
Okay, did you do all of my staff reports? I'll get some of it. You're obviously familiar with this project and actually approved it in the budget. The, we used, the procurement procedure we used in this was competitive negotiation, which until July 1st of this year was reserved in the scapegoat for professional services. Without a predetermined issue, I would have gotten a body of another form of procurement. We work for such things as equipment. So it was, could the general assembly change that to allow it to be used for this type of procurement? Because this is sort of tailor-fit for it. You know, you want a playground and have an idea of what you want, you don't know exactly what you want. So we issued an RFP. We had three proposals submitted in the evaluation panel of this form to rank those proposals. Jen Lewis is on the evaluation panel, Dave Farmer, and Phil Fretket, representing Citizens for Central Park. We went down to two vendors and then negotiated with them an exact plan for the playground. And the evaluation panel, the men, so we agreed that the one vendor site concepts, that they are distributed miracle. Playground equipment was the best value proposed to the town. They had the best warranty of the two and frankly, the functionality of the street equipment that is offered. You can, the first enclosure shows you the lay-down. One important thing, I think, and the evaluation panel thought also, was that we have two separate play areas. One for the younger kids, age 2 to 5, and one for the older kids, age 5 to 12. One addition to that rendering is the suite of equipment for the 2 to 5 year olds will also have a cover, sun cover on as part of the negotiation process that through them. So that is an additional piece of equipment. So there will be sun protection for both, both age groups. In addition to those two suites of equipment, there is a four-seat teeter totter, a balance beam, and a piece of apparatus called a tennis pin, which is a spin. So we're very happy with the proposal that the vendor made. And also attached to your staff report is the summary of funding. When council budgeted $15,000 of T M O for this, the expectation was that we raise $15,000 and do this project in two phases. One is here and the second is, we've been, I think, much, much successful in fundraising and anticipated. The, I want to, it's always, it's always, you know, we had a lot of trepidation doing some probably individual people that I wanted to do it because I forget some of it. But CCP did, throwing a lot of, through fundraising efforts and I want to thank General Tally, who organized many, many fundraising events. We're going to have almost $13,000. CCP is contributing. Also want to thank Chris Danny included in there. He's, of course, he's advised to his epiphany party. And Chris is... last year's Epiphany Party, and Chris is the leader of the, I believe it's almost five thousand dollars, seven, it was almost five thousand, it's more than seven thousand. Uh, and Chris was the organizer and leader of the Epiphany Party, uh, is down in the office of CCP. Uh, I also, uh, we also see a, uh, County Jurorship grant for seven and a half thousand dollars, another CCP board member, Bank Mayor, uh, was the one that wrote and secured that grant, uh, as well as, uh, incessantly bugged the voting club for their five thousand dollar contribution, and that's a little bit for that. Uh, so, and there were many, many, uh, people that were involved in all these fundraising efforts, but without those individuals that, uh, I just mentioned, uh, we wouldn't be sitting here with, uh, thirty thou- over thirty thousand dollars in, in fundraising. So, before you tonight, there are two options, um, we can, uh, basically, if you kick in another five, uh, five-point-one K, uh, we can get the whole job done now, and award the contract, uh, for the full suite of equipment. If you prefer to, uh, defer that five-point-one K to, uh, to next year, uh, we can, uh, the contractor said that, uh, that DEQ identified pieces of equipment that we could, we could hold off on, uh, in five or six July, between the same. I also want to thank the people, I want to thank the board staff, too, they did, uh, rip out on their own, without any contractor, help the existing equipment, uh, replacing it, there's one more piece that has to go, and, uh, they will be installing, uh, the new equipment, and, uh, we've got a whole bunch of volunteers to help with, and, uh, so, we've got, uh, two alternatives before we proceed. Anybody else have questions?
I would just like to make a motion that we fund the whole thing, we actually five thousand dollars, get it all done at one time, and have a new playground.
I have a second. I have a statement.
I did have some questions. The forty-five point seven in the staff force says installation materials are estimated to cost five thousand, bring it to fifty point seven. So, forty-five point seven isn't everything, or am I reading?
No, four- forty-five point seven is the equipment, and then with another five thousand for installation, total project is fifty point seven, and we have forty-five point six of them.
Okay.
So, that's, yeah, so that's the difference.
And the engineered wood fiber mulch, it's, it's a, it's a special, uh, a special cut, custom cut mulch, and, uh... How often will you have to replace that?
You know, uh, every few years, uh, it, it has to go to a depth of about, uh, ten inches, and, uh, after pump reports remove the existing equipment, they did re-grade and fluff it up, but it does deteriorate over time. Uh, we, uh, we did look at some op- we talked to the vendor, uh, about some options, one of the things you can see now is it's rubberized surface, uh, that is poured in place, rubberized surface, uh, but you have to put over a concrete base or, or a highly compacted, or a soda base, and it's, it's very expensive, it's almost fifteen dollars to work for. Uh, so, you know, we, for that kind of, 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 of surface, it would cost as much as the equipment.
Yeah, I mean, when we were budgeting this, we were anticipating this project to be sixty thousand, is that right?
Yes, yes.
So, I'd just like to add my congratulations to everybody that, that was able to, to raise enough funds to make what I would do in one phase, and that's very impressive.
Second. I said...
Twenty seconds.
On favor? Aye.
I have one, one question. Uh, you can all just fit in the same footprint, uh, I think, any more space?
No, it can all, it can all fit in the same, within the, within the fence line. And in fact, uh, I think we're gonna have a little extra space left, and what we plan to do is, uh, all those tires that we removed, uh, if we have the space, we're gonna build them, kind of tire them out in the floor and sand, so the kids can call, you know, fall down with the tire, uh...
Okay, any other? Uh, Vice Mayor and Council comments, five minutes.
Oh, the animal, I'm sorry.
Oh, animal, okay. Town code modification, uh, to Article ten of, uh, President's Picardian Act.
Sir, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, we, uh, remember we discussed this at the work session, uh, to amend some language within our existing code, uh, to go from dog to animal, affecting section fifty-one ninety-one animals on beach and other public spaces. Yeah, just tightening up some grammatical errors, as well as adding a new section, animal control, uh, if you allow me to read to you, pursuant to section thirty point two, sixty-five fifty-five, the code, which has amended, the county of Northampton has created a position of animal control officer, the town of Cape Charles hereby appoints the county animal control officer as its agent to enforce the provisions of the animal control ordinance within corporate amendments of the town. The duties of the animal control officer shall, uh, shall be those provided for in Code of Virginia, section three point two, sixty-five fifty-five, that's it. And in the codified ordinances of Northampton County, chapter ninety-five, as amended, and such other duties as may be provided for during, the town hereby adopts and incorporates by reference the applicable state statutes and the applicable county ordinances as amended. Whenever a conflict arises between the provision of this chapter and the state code and or county animal control ordinances provisions, the state code and county law provisions shall prevail. I read this just because this will be new language to be included within our town code, and that will bring us into compliance with the requirement of the state town code that you give in ours, uh, a local code to so appoint the animal control officer of the county, within the town's values.
I want to hear any motion.
Can we that we adopt the ordinance?
Second. Discussion? There are no discussion, the audience passes. Oh, well...
Van and yes?
The town and yes?
Uh, yes.
Van and yes? Passes. Okay, now, Vice Mayor and, uh, Council comments, three minutes, five minutes per speaker. I would just like to tell you all to have a fantastic Christmas, a very happy New Year, and you're all invited to the Epiphany Party on Saturday, the sixteenth, in the fire station, it's Lee Jackson King Weekend, and the group that's gonna get the money this year is the museum, and welcomes it. So, come with big pockets, your least favorite Christmas present, and have fun, starting at six o'clock at the, uh, fireworks. Last year, one hundred and sixty people. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I, I was, uh, thought, David, for our toughness and all this caring for us and getting, you know, the Christmas, uh, keep, always so beautiful, patient, those be, eh, patient. Uh, and, um, so, I'm just drinking to her for that. Also, I want to thank, you know, the Northampton County Board of Supervisors, who sent me a Christmas card. One of the reasons why, it's about the only time I've, uh, I've ever considered as honorable. Look at the, uh, the card, I mean, I look, this is the old, this is, this is the important card that I get, so, one thousand, one.
Anybody else?
Hi, I reiterate, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone here, um, Hope to give the party, and I second your vote on the week. Thank you.
And thanks to the whole staff. Uh, well, Harry, what do you...
Announcements, please.
Can we read all the announcements?
No.
Okay. Uh, December eighteenth, town offices closed, that's tomorrow, uh, twelve to two, for the employees' Christmas party, lunch, sorry. December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, town offices closed for Christmas holidays. December thirty-first, second dropping of the crab pot at ten P.M. January first, the offices are closed for New Year's Day. January seventh, town, uh, council work session at six P.M. January twelve, mayor's office hours, two to three here at the civic center. January fifteen, town offices closed for Lee Jackson King Day. It goes to, uh, January eighteenth, Monday, town is closed for, uh, Martin Luther King's birthday. January twenty-first, town council's recognition meeting at six o'clock. And January twenty-sixth, mayor's office hours at six P.M. The library is having another tea, January.
Yes.
Sold, I'm gonna say sold out, I think it's sold out.
Tea is sold out.
It is, the tea is sold out, okay. Now, do I hear a motion? Second? Any objections, our meeting is over at ten.